Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna do is open up for public forum. If there's anybody here wishing to address the council, it's not on the agenda. Looking around the room and seeing no movement, I'm gonna call it, close the public forum and ask for agenda changes. Is there any changes, Ethan?
We have none this evening, Mr. Mayor.
And I would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, make a move to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. We have no unfinished business tonight, so we're gonna move on to new business. And the first item is the powers lots, one through four, RFP responses. As you recall, there's four lots the city owns on that new Main Street project. And we wanted to hold off until those lots were platted and the street was in. That's been done for a while and we put it out there for sale. And Ethan can update you on the responses.
Yeah. As noted in what we sent out prior to the meeting, there was only the one response received within the response window. And that was from Red Fox Estates. And you all got a copy of that response, which will be made public pending your actions. So, didn't know if there were any responses or anything. You had the information we sent out as far as answers to the questions we had to, just clarifying the terms of that offer. So, and I believe there's representation from the respondent here this evening. If you have any direct questions you'd like to ask them.
Counsel, anybody have any questions?
No, I don't.
Well, if you guys want to approve this sale, I would entertain that motion. Can't find.
And obviously, we would still have to draw up a real estate contract that would come before you all as well.
Unless somebody's got a, I'm still trying to find that here. If somebody else has got it up.
I don't have it. That's why I didn't see it.
Gotcha. We can get it. So, the total, I guess, total, total value from Red Fox Estates that they put in theirs is, was thirty-eight thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars and eleven cents. Part of that would be a cash payment for seven thousand, fifty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. And then, as we had previous discussion on work sessions and stuff, like whenever G came in, they as developers had engaged in work that benefited those powers lots. And so, the value of that was thirty-one thousand, three hundred twenty-nine thirty, indicating, you know, that they would not seek reimbursement from the city for that. Essentially, what, work that had been done that benefited those lots. And that was for the siding of transformers running, which normally is a cost associated with the developers that had been done. So, that's where that thirty-eight thousand, three eighty-eight eleven comes from.
What was the total amount, the sale amount there? I'm sorry.
Thirty-eight thousand, three hundred eighty-eight dollars and eleven cents.
Get my pen out fast enough. Okay.
And they did acknowledge as far as the other stipulations in the RFP that they were willing to enter into with the city with any subsequent, you know, developments to ensure, you know,
Right.
that the city's in goal of those lots being developed. Realized that they would be buying the lots, you know, as is where, so the floodplain considerations on those far north lots are their responsibility to deal with. The city's not going to, to be contributing anything to, to bring those out of the floodplain. And they, they acknowledged that they understood and were okay with that. So.
Mr. Mayor, I move we accept the offer pending contract work with the attorney.
I'll second that. I have a motion in a second to approve the offer for the powers lots, one through four. And we'll have to draft the real estate contract later. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those same sign.
I feel like I didn't exactly have all the information since I just walked in, so.
It was in the packet.
I mean, I know. I just didn't know if there was something else discussed. And so, I just, if I, I'm fine with just not voting on it, is basically what I'm saying. So, I realized it was in the packet. I didn't know what the discussion was about. And I know I came in late, so I apologize. My son's game ran right till seven.
Basically, we didn't really cover anything that wasn't already covered, Shawna. So, you didn't miss anything.
No, that's fine. Yeah.
Next on the agenda, we have the Harvey County EDC interlocal agreement. And we have representation here from the EDC. Do we need Beth on this yet, Ethan, or?
Um, I think if there were any questions, I know City Attorney Jants isn't with us, but he's also seen this by virtue of his position with other cities who are funding partners, as well as Harvey County now. Essentially, looking to just formalize the responsibilities of the EDC, you know, their, their responsibilities. And then ours as a funding partner. Again, the interlocal itself doesn't stipulate or contractually obligate the city to any set amount. It just says, you know, that EDC will make a request of the city. And the city as a funding partner would have a responsibility, you know, to live up to whatever funding commitment you all would make. I don't know, Beth.
So, since the EDC was established, it's always been a sort of informal agreement that will do what our mission is for each one of the communities. And this just puts it in writing what the expectations of the EDC are by our funding partners. And gives it a little bit more of a formal document to say, this is the money, and this is what we expect you to be doing with it. We'll still come to you and do our funding request. We'll still do our budget request with our board. And so, that will be a separate thing. This is just formalizing what's been informal this entire time that the EDC's been in existence.
You guys just don't trust us anymore, or what?
We just wanna make sure everybody has the same expectations and deliverables. So, it was something that was brought up by another one of our funding partners, that they requested an agreement. And we said, we don't want an agreement with just one community, because we work well as a countywide organization. So, then that's why we worked it into an interlocal, instead of just making it for one community. So.
That's best, yeah. Well, is that, Mr. Mayor? If there's no questions or discussion, I make a motion to approve the economic development interlocal agreement with the cities of Harvey County, Harvey County and the Harvey County Economic Development Council Incorporated.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to accept the interlocal agreement with the Harvey County EDC. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. Congratulations, Beth. Thanks for coming in tonight. Next item, and I've talked to Ethan a little bit about this. There's some exciting things. This is a KDOT, or KENS Department of Transportation Innovative Technology Grant. And I'll let Ethan tell you all about it.
Yeah. We kinda discussed this in one of the previous work sessions. We did do the preliminary application and got notification of KDOT to submit a formal application for it. This is something we've been working on with PEC and the City of Sedgwick, which has a similar scope, trying to do a joint regional, you know, application to, to hopefully not be in direct competition with one another. You can see there, just kinda put the scope and then the estimates from PEC. It's a seventy-five, twenty-five. We are trying to stick to that twenty-five percent match, so not going over that. Yeah, we'll note, in the, in the packet with thirty thousand, it's, we haven't done a, a joint application under KDOT. We've done it under Department of Commerce. So, that's asking for the entire amount, assuming that Halsted would serve as the fiscal and administrative agent. So, we basically have to guarantee the entire funding match. Although, if we were successfully awarded, very similar to what we did with the Department of Commerce grants that we've worked with other cities, we'd enter into MOUs that actually stipulate, you know, that they're gonna contribute their share. And that is a response for us sending, you know, funds to them that we were awarded. So, the scope of the project for the public and those that, you know, didn't see it from the work session, would be doing a full inventory of our streets, up to date with the current conditions to reflect, you know, everything we've done since our last street evaluation back in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. Also, basically driving the streets, sending those pictures that go, get analyzed through an AI system and get rated via the Pazer method. We'll also get a five-year recommended maintenance plan based on those results. We also plan, again, to start building GIS layers. This would be our streets and hopefully our stormwater. And then, the technology we're buying as far as the GPS units, those things can be utilized then to also build out GIS on the utility system in later projects. So.
Are you comfortable with the position of the other cities?
Yeah, it's just us and Sedgwick.
They're willing and ready to go.
Yep.
Okay.
So.
Sounds good.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll motion to approve staff to submit an application to KDOT Innovative Technology Program, authorizing up to thirty thousand dollars in local matching funds if awarded.
Second. Got a motion in a second to apply for this KDOT Innovative Technology Grant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. That carries. Well, that finishes up the new business portion of our agenda. We do have one executive session this evening. And I'll entertain that motion as soon as Jim delivers it.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Halsted City Council recess into executive session to discuss pending contract negotiations. Consult with the city attorney, he's not here today, on a matter that would be deemed privileged to attorney-client privilege relationship exemption, KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two, to include the city manager, the city attorney by phone, and have us reconvene at seven twenty-five.
Second.
Yeah. Have a motion in a second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. We'll move to the back council room. We are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result of? Hearing nothing from the council, we'll go ahead and move on to the report section of the agenda. We'll start tonight with governing body comments. And I'm starting with you, Jim.
Better turn, you know. Just like to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving weekend.
Charlie.
Certainly. The reese went up today. They looked nice. Kind of a blustery day to be up there to build a machine to do that. But I think the city did a great job. If you haven't noticed, or didn't notice, COVID tests products are available, correct?
At, at. At the nursing home.
At the nursing home.
Yes.
Right. So, if you need to have some on hand before they expire, because COVID is with us. Yeah. We've had it at school with personnel, so it's there. And if you get the chance, tomorrow could be a real challenge for the rake and run people. If you don't know what that's all about, student, basically, the student body at middle school and high school, clean up yards and bag it up. And a lot of, a lot of people donate their time, their vehicles, to all that stuff away. It's a good, it's a good program. It's a good community betterment program provided by the school. That's it.
George.
No, sir, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing.
Josh.
No.
Shawna.
Um, just, I guess, ditto what the rest of you have said. Happy Thanksgiving, safe travels. Um, yeah. Enjoy a little bit of time off for those that get it. And those that are working, thank you for what you do.
I'll reflect those same comments. Wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And tomorrow morning, if you're at the, at the school, the mayor gets to address USD four forty tomorrow morning at eight o'clock at the pep rally. And I'm kinda looking forward to that. And I'll probably be nervous talking to all those students instead of all you guys. But we'll see how it goes. With that, I'll turn it over to Ethan for his city manager report.
Thank you. Not a whole lot. Kinda to piggyback on Councilmember Robinson's comment. The city leaf and limb pickup for the winter will start the week, that Monday following Thanksgiving. So, thanks to Public Works, because I know they've had their fill of limb pick up this year. But just remember, please to, to have limbs cut down to a manageable length, preferably fourteen feet or less. And bags need to have just leaves, please no trash or other waste for pickup. We are currently going through and getting prep for next meeting for the new and updated utility rates going into twenty twenty-five. Starting to look at the legislation and legislative preview for various entities from KMU to the league, as the legislature will get to work there in January and will have some changes. So, that's been taking some time on those preview. Work continues on the spec building. It's just about done. I'm hopeful, first week of December or so, we'll get that final certificate of occupancy and get that thing finalized and able to fully market. And other than that, just a lot of us are gearing up, either department heads and stuff, time off with the holidays and end of year. So, just, again, it's been, did wanna point out too, we did have a mechanical issue with our check printer, which is why you were all provided the check register this evening in person. Apologies, that did not make it into the packet. Actually, had a, a mechanical piece of our check printer go down. And the, the shipping said it would be here Friday, and we were hopeful it would. And then, we got it today. So, kudos to Julie and her team for, for pivoting and being able to do that. And yeah, apologies for those of you who are used to seeing it. Hopefully, everyone was able to have a look at that before the meeting and get any questions to Julie they had. So.